Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public School Board Meeting on August 11, 2025, at 5:29 PM. Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Press the button.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mrs. Hall?
Present.
Reverend Harrison?
Present.
Dr. Jackson?
Present.
Dr. Mullinar?
Present.
Mrs. Sykes? Seven oh.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Member Hall?
I pledge allegiance. Chief of Guard of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Hall. We have our recognitions with from our Expanded Learning College Career Academy Summer 2025 Presentations at this time.
Thank you, President Jackson. We are excited to present on our summer programming this evening. We have Tiffany Lundee, who's our CCAA Coordinator for Expanded Learning. And she will present what she actually had an opportunity to present at our Instructional Policy last week. She has permission to give highlights this evening, and we are going to open it up for Q and A. Ms. Lundee is responsible for organizing summer funding as allocated by APS, Community Partners in and out of school time space, and grant dollars throughout the year. Ms. Lundee also ensures organizational systems across all departmental programs and departments, including grounds, transportation, nutrition, services, special education support, staffing, and technology. So at this time, I will ask Ms. Lundee if she would please come up. I'm going to turn the mic over to her, and she can continue with introductions of our community-based organizations that supports our programming.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Alrighty, we did present this slideshow last week, but I want to kind of go through it quickly today. I have some guests here today to speak with us. We always lead off with Why Summer. Summer for us is a time to build relationships between our students, our scholars, and adults. It connects them with their community, provides a safe environment for them when they are away from their families, engages them in things of interest to them, and of course, supports academic and enrichment growth for our kids. This summer, we have forty-three, or I'm sorry, forty-eight programs that were offered. Our seats available for, all seats available for those forty-eight programs was forty-seven, forty-three. We had seventeen seventy-one for kids that were registered, and they were in thirty-five ninety-eight for seats. That just means that out of those seventeen hundred-plus kids, they registered for more than one camp at a time throughout the summer. We were able, again, this year, just like last year, to fill seventy-five percent of our available seats. This is just a simple list of all of the forty-eight programs that we offered. Elementary in light blue, middle school programs are in yellow, and then any of our high school programs that were available are in orange. All forty-eight are represented there, so you can see what programs we had available for our scholars. For our marketing strategies, this was a question that came up before IP. Marketing strategies for these programs, we started out with a postcard mailer that went out months before it actually became available on our district website. On August, or April first, we had all of our programming available for parents to see on a program called School Joy. It's our registration software with APS. We had building posters in all of our schools. We had parents called by principals. Direct invites were made by principals. And all throughout the summer, we had all call reminders, go out to our families of what camps were coming up, when camps were actually starting. And social media also had documentation of when our programs were available. A little bit of data collected from this summer. Now, our summer programming actually just ended last Friday, so this data was right before it ended. Out of our seventeen seventy-one unique students, you can see our ethnicity breakdown. That matches the ethnicity breakdown of our district. We did include inclusion for our special needs childrens. Twenty-four percent of them came with IEPs of some sort. Refugee status would be our kids who are ESL. Nine percent of those children participated in summer programming, and we were able to support eight percent of our homeless population with transportation, getting them to the programs, anything that they actually needed, getting rid of fees, anything that was there. Couple of our summer highlights that we had. We had our summer learn and earn. Last week, I had Mary Tavardi with me. She did actually head up this program. We targeted children from AAA, APS Online, and East, and we were able to invite forty-four students in to earn academic credits that they needed for graduation, and we were able to pay them for the work that they actually did. We called it SLAY, the Summer Learn and Earn Program. And we also were able to run our first-ever driver's ed program this summer. We still offered the scholarship that we offered during the regular school year. We were able to support thirty-three students at Garfield. Well, it was district-wide. We held the course at Garfield. We had a hundred and thirty-one applications for that. The very last question on the application is a essay in which they write down what their statement of need is, that they compete with their peers in the same building that they're in. Five students from each building are selected. That's how we get our thirty. There were three extras because I just couldn't say no. We had a few city accolades this summer. We were going to be talking about my Adventurers' Camp in just a moment, but one of the articles was on a culinary camp that we offered. You may have seen it a couple of weeks ago. It was on Sunday's front page. And then we also had our Safety Around Water Program. We served over two-hundred-and-fifty kids in our swim program this summer. A lot of them actually took advantage of the June offering that we had with six free lessons, and then they took advantage of the July offering that we had with another six free lessons. Let's see here. Data collection. So last week at Instructional Policy, we were asked about collecting data to show the impact of the summer programming that we offer. In CCAA, we call that the ABCs of student growth. The A is for attendance, the B is for behavior infractions, and the C is for curricular access, which is like academic success. I have some preliminary data from 2024. We do not have the data for how this summer affects our kids because we have to get to the end of the school year. But last year, for 2024 data, we did show that kids who participated in summer only accounted for less than ten percent of the APS disciplinary infractions, and they had higher ABC averages during the school year. This year, we are looking to target some of our more at-risk students to see if we are seeing growth with those kids. And I did mention last week that that is because I do have a small theory that sometimes our higher-performing kids are the ones who do do summer. So what I would like to do is invite some of the kids who normally wouldn't participate in summer, and we did that this year, and we will track them through the end of this school year to see if we had an impact on their ABCs of growth. Alrighty, so also, we will be doing some internal tracking, of course, of our kids, but we also use Summit Education Initiative. We've been using them for years. Everyone in Summit County uses them. We submit all of our goals, or all of our data to them so that they can tell us what the impact of the learning is. Right now, just last week, I think, they, we just sent five years of data, the credits that they earned, their work-based learning, and the activity codes for our kids that participate in summer. We did that for the last five years so that we can get a better picture of the impact of learning compared to Summit County. So they are a data convenor that we use also. Summer showcase will be Adventurers' Camp. I did, I'm just going to remind you of what this is. We, last year, piloted a three-week program where we had a collaboration with the Youth Success Summit. Youth Success Summit pairs us up with community-based organizations. We, as Akron Public Schools, brings the teacher, who we compare up with that community organization. We do a three-week program where they come every single day, and we call that like a sneaky learning that we put into their exciting enrichment activity. We have two of the, oh, wait, last year, let me tell you, we had just two of those type camps. This year, with grant dollars, we were able to expand that to eight Adventurers' Camps that were available to our kids. We have four for middle-school-level kids, and we have four for elementary kids. They are listed on those programs that we have. We call them all Adventurers' Camp. I did bring in some of our leads today. Our goal was to bring in the CBO and the APS teacher, but I have one CBO. I have Dominique Waters. He's the founder and Executive Director of Akron Sneaker Academy. He did an Adventurers' Camp that we call Sneakers. It was actually on polymers. That was the topic. And then we had, and his teacher was unable to make it today, but for Tim Anderson's group, our CEO and founder of Fallen Fathers, he wasn't able to make it, but his teacher is here. Deanna Badley is here. We had a basketball camp with them that was actually to give our kids resiliency, right? This was to teach resiliency outside of the classroom. So both of them are going to talk to you today for Fallen Fathers. In particular, they work with many of our youth. This was where I was targeting children, doing all calls to any kid who had low attendance and low scores this summer. A lot of those kids did end up in the Fallen Fathers group for a basketball camp. They work directly with our kids that are furthest from opportunity. Okay, so she's going to just speak to how that went with all those students. And then our Sneaker Camp, which is a returning camp from last year, we're going to talk about the growth that he experienced this year, and why we want to continue and expand these programs for an extra week next year, and with more children. He wants to double what we are actually serving. By the way, our Adventurers' Camps in those eight different camps that we offer, we serviced over almost two-hundred children just for those three weeks available. So we have more camps. We could do more kids. So we'll do that. Does anybody have any questions, though, before I bring them up about just summer and a quick little review?
Member Hall, did you have something?
Did I look like I have something to say? Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. The first slide that you showed with how many kids attended and how many spaces you had open?
Do you want to go back to that?
If you don't mind. And then you had another number where some kids signed up for more. So out of forty-seven, forty-three seats, but we had ninety, we had about thirty-five. So the thirty-five, ninety-eight, that still counts towards the forty-seven, forty-three, right?
It does. That's the number that I actually divided into the forty-seven, forty-three. Available seats was whatever they told me their camp capacity was. And so we didn't fill them all to capacity, but we filled seventy-five percent of what we had available.
Right, and that's wonderful. I did have a few people ask who kids don't go to APS, like, hey, if there are seats that are not filled by kids, can people on the outside pay to fill the seats?
At this time, we don't accept kids that are outside of APS. It's a liability issue for having them at camp, is what I was told by Business Affairs many years ago. But right now, we only have our camps available to our APS scholars. And we have all of their data information because of School Joy Registration that we use. It actually links to our e-school registration.
Okay, thank you for that. So now, parents is watching it, because a lot of people do watch our board meetings. They can know now. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to be more intentional to make sure I'm looking around the horseshoe. Dr. Mullinar, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have questions, but I am always, I think our summer programs are one of the most amazing things that we offer as a district, and I want and hope that we can share this as much as possible. I visited some of the pre-fall camps, had their presentations on Friday of last week, and I continue to be impressed and enjoyed. I saw the second graders' presentations on their community and how they'd give back to the community. And of course, we had police officers, firefighters. We had teachers, pet rescue. I thought that was neat. We had someone who was a hotel owner. She was starting a bed and breakfast, and it really, at first, I was surprised, and I thought it really got to the concept of nurture and care and community and building up and increasing. And these were seven-year-olds that, you know, are having these, giving the presentations, having these ideas, having the creativity. So thank you, and to all of our partners and everyone who's involved for our summer camps.
The showcases of learning are a huge deal. Like, we do those even with our Adventurers' Camp. Each one had a showcase of learning at the very end, and they can speak a little bit more to that once I pull them up. But the whole, I do believe in our summer program, our after-school programming. I just believe that this gives enriching opportunities for our kids while keeping them safe when they're away from their parents, and then, of course, continuing their academic learning, even if they don't know that that's what they're doing. That's the whole point of having programming that's outside of the school day to benefit our children.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Mullinar. Always gives a very in-depth reflection on the summer camps because you've been, your children attend. So she gives not only insight from the point of a parent, but also as a board member. And I think that's good because in real time, you can talk to what's working and what's not as a parent and as a board member. So I think that's great. Are there any other board questions currently?
Then I want to bring up some good news, then. So I'm going to bring up, do you guys want to come up to the board? Okay, so I'm going to bring up Dominique Waters with Sneaker Camp, and I'm going to bring up Deanna Badley with our basketball camp.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. I just want to share, as an intervention specialist at Litchfield, I do have the opportunity to look back in the background and say that I have to be very creative at times when being able to work with children. So during the camp, I was able to see that a lot of our students did have IEPs, so I knew that there were some students that did face some challenges academically. But being in an environment where they are comfortable, because we're playing basketball, we're not in the classroom, they're on a basketball court. So the two things that we were to focus on was teamwork and building leadership skills. And that just doesn't go in being an athlete on the court. It also teaches you a lot of skills out in life, how to handle different motivation or techniques, different opportunities, different problematic areas that come towards you in life. So it wasn't just the entire day. We're going to talk about how to dribble and shoot the basketball. When we had to do and focus on our presentation, there were four areas. We focused on nutrition. We focused on physical fitness. We also focused on mental health awareness, and we focused on basketball IQ. The children were able to focus, pick their own groups. So they took ownership. They weren't told where they had to go. It also showed that some of the young ladies, because they were males and females, we saw some that were always stuck together. But when it was time to pull themselves into a group, they gained their independence. So that opened our eyes to see that, you know, we do have friendships, so we do have to focus on independence to get where you want to go. And that's a thing that we wanted to instill in them. So with, I want to focus on two young men. A lot of times, being able to do a presentation, some do not speak out loud, some do not want to speak in front of anyone, some just want to fall back and take the background role. But there was a young man that was a little hesitant, but then, when it was time to do the presentation, he stood forward and he memorized his. He was able to give the definition, the basketball IQ, being able to tell everyone this is the importance of it and how it relates to me and my life. Because basketball, we heard plenty of times, is more than just a game. It's not just a game on the court. In life, being able to, once again, being able to be a team and also have the leadership skills in yourself. Another young man, it just went through his best friend being killed. And there's a lot of violence going on in communities. But how do you motivate a young man that just lost his best friend, and yet he chose to be in the group of mental health awareness? He chose to speak, sorry, he chose to pick a song in this group. It was by NBA Young Boy called Drawing Symbols. They were able to play a song, because a lot of times, as adults, we want to tell the children what they should listen to. Tell the youth, this is something that you should listen to. But they were able to pick a song that related to them in life, drawing symbols, how to come and face adversity, how to push through. He had to speak on that after losing his best friend to violence. Unfortunately, right at that time, when we were getting ready to do the presentation, he was called to go to a dentist's appointment, but he was able to tell another teammate, another teammate, I'm going to reel you in and tell you what we have to talk about. I'm going to explain everything to you and give you your part that was mine, but I'm passing a torch to you. And he did that with excellence. And when he came back, he said, how did it go? Instead of just shining back and being in the mold where I, yes, he was grieving, but we were able to pull him out of that, and he chose to be part of the mental health awareness. Now, this is a basketball camp, but mental health awareness is very important as we know that the mind, the body can't go anywhere without the mind, and he was able to fight through that and be able to push through and say, I'm going to be here for my team, and I'm going to show leadership skills. So in our basketball camp, in those four lines of basketball, we were able to stop and talk about these different points in life, to bring light to our young men and our young women about being able to persevere, being a team, working, show leadership skills. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very happy to be here tonight. I'm Dominique Waters, the founder of the Akron Sneaker Academy, and I am still gleaning from this summer camp. And I want to leave, but just thank you all for your investment. You know, fifth-quarter learning is essential to our community. Having our young people engage in high-quality programming over the summer is just essential. So just a quick recap of this year's Sneaker Camp. Again, we piloted it last year, but they blew me away this year. We went bigger and better. We kept eighty-five percent attendance over three weeks, which is really hard to do in the summer, but I guess we were doing some things right with our young people. We had, on average, I would say twenty-seven to twenty-eight middle schoolers a day, and also twelve youth volunteers. So we had anywhere between forty-five kids with us every single day. The other thing, we had them on a college campus. You know, we spent the three weeks on the University of Akron campus. That early exposure to a college campus as a middle schooler was very valuable, and a highlight of that experience was we took them to the Meyer School of Art to do a hands-on activity with their staff, creating this wonderful ceramic Air Force One, which is my personal their staff, creating this wonderful ceramic Air Force One, which is my personal favorite sneaker. And then our sneaker expo, we had over 100 community stakeholders, funders, partners come to see the students' learning, and they showed up and showed out. I got great feedback of how they presented their learning, their confidence, the experience, and the energy in the room was infectious. And our mayor was able to come and present, and also, they got to present in front of the mayor as well. So, the investment is just crucial, because we're building momentum, we're having that impact. You know, I want to go 50 kids next year if possible, so another APS teacher would be critical to that, so we can keep that quality there. And again, we're bringing kids from all over the district. We got I Promise kids with Litchfield, with Hire, with Bookdo, all-in-one learning environment, leveling the playing field to show what our brilliance in our inner city and in our urban communities can be. So, I'm on fire about the work, and I'm excited for this investment. And just thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Waters and Ms. Badley. We appreciate your work, Ms. Lundey. Are there any requests to address the board? No sign-ups for anyone to address the board? All right. Board member reflections. Yes, Vice President Alexander, please.
Thank you. I think this, my presentations fall right into what has just been said with the two presentations that's been given already. I had the opportunity to attend two events, and one was, both of them were really good, but one just kind of blew me out. I'm going to talk about that second. First was the Akron Zoo, the Backpack Adventure at the zoo. It's always fun to me to see a number of kids having fun, being out there, learning. There were teachers there, there were counselors, there were principals there, there were community agencies there. The kids got books, bags with supplies they need. There were participation from East CLC's marching band, from Firestone's Vocal Jazz and Marching Band, and from Garfield's marching band. So, they got a chance to play music at the zoo as well. But I think there was, the wolves that were there really didn't like the music too much, because they kept howling when they kept hearing music. But the music, maybe they were just tuning in themselves, singing to the music. But it was a very nice event to see our kids having fun and also learning there at the zoo, because all of it is about learning. The other one was, I went to Project Grad's Bridge to Kindergarten Summer Academy graduation per se. And this is the 17th year, I guess they've had it with Akron Public Schools. They had about 44 students who completed three weeks. They were from Bookdo Cluster, Firestone Cluster, Garfield Cluster, and East Cluster. They focused on kindergarten readiness and learning activity, literacy, math, color, shapes, social, emotional skills and transitions. They also had partners, they partnered with Red Oak, and Red Oak was part of the mental health piece to help the kids and the families there. They had Art Spark, which is a nice program. I think the kids really liked that, because they get involved, they do fun things. So, it was really nice. They had four classroom assistants, all of them were Project Grad graduates, so they came back to help with Project Grad. The parents and caregivers attended a workshop that was put on by Red Oak Health and Summit Educational Initiative Early Learning Project, and Mrs. Stancie Sykes, our own Stancie Sykes was there to help put this on as well. The students received backpacks also with supplies, materials that they needed for this upcoming class, this upcoming school year. They also had a picture of themselves, which is really nice. They had a picture of each kid, and these kids will be the class of 2038. And so, they had a picture of them with a tassel on it, with showing that they're the class of 2038. I thought that was really neat, it was nice. They also, one of the fun part, the kids, I think, had a lot of fun with this as well, as that they crossed the bridge. So, they went from pre-K to kindergarten, but they had to cross the bridge, walk across the bridge, say hello, and then sit down. So, that was really good. I thought it was really good. I want to also show this T-shirt. I have about five seconds. This was a T-shirt that every kid received, okay? And it's a, and so, each kid received, see this T-shirt, and all of them will be participating also in a year-round program, that their family or they need help also, that the social and emotional learning individuals will be there. The last thing, I know I'm a little long, there was a poem that Mrs. Jackie Silas Butler gave out. I think every adult who is dealing with any kid, no matter what grade, needs to read this here. This entails every single person who deals with kids. I'm taking it to my job, because I think some of us need this as well. I think everyone can use this here. Anyone who's working with kids or dealing with kids. Thank you, Madam President, I went over.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Maybe that's something we can maybe post or send out through our communications. Dr. Hall, maybe you can send that out to our families so they can have that. Are there any other board member community reflections? Yes, Dr. Molnar, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just quickly talk on two events. One, I went to the Akron Inner City Soccer, hosted a tournament this weekend, and we, it brought in students from districts all over. So, kids from Norton, Cogge Falls, Brexview, Broadview Heights. There were so many kids there, doing exactly what we want kids to do, is be kids, come together, play sports, and work together. And there were so many people, I said, I don't think I've seen this many people all in one spot. There was nowhere to park, and I go to Copley Soccer Complex a lot. There was nowhere to park. It was so wonderful and beautiful. And best of all, our kids were highlighted, our Akron kids winning lots of games, so that's always good to see, too. But speaking of nowhere to park, I also went to Backpack at the Zoo, and that's another place that I have been a whole bunch of times, and I have never seen so many people. I had to park somewhere that I didn't know existed. And I want to just say, I agree with everything that Member Alexander said, he's spot on. Thank you to all of the volunteers and the partners, and especially the volunteers and the volunteers that made that happen, because there were so many people. And without, I don't think the average volunteer could have been able to handle that amount of parents and students. We had trained educators who could navigate those spaces, and we were very, very lucky to have you and to have them. So, thank you to everyone. I was shocked to see it didn't make, I didn't see it on like the TV news. I don't know if we didn't invite them or what, but it would have been great to see that on the news, because it was such a beautiful event. There were groups of students that came together and navigated through the zoo together. So, it's like a coming-back-to-school event for them also, as they're spending time together. And of course, there was a free carousel rides. So, I've also never seen such a long line for that carousel. But it was such a beautiful event, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Member Molnar. Member Hall?
Thank you for that. I kind of wanted to piggyback on when the two presenters presented, when they talked about more than a game. You know, just learning basketball is just not playing basketball. It's learning fundamentals of basketball, but it's also learning to work together, create leaders, and thinking. That's pretty much what they talked about. And the reason why that's so near and dear to me is because my oldest daughter went through basketball, you know, with, at Miller South, but it was through Ladies First that's heavily involved in our community. And we have a lawyer now, you know? So, it created, outside of an outstanding mom, in that, it created this outspoken young lady to know that she could do anything and everything. And I think, I know Ladies First really played a major impact in that. So, sports is very, very important. I think that's why I'm always asking, well, what about the field? What about this? Why does the school have a track? You know, so, sports really do a lot for our kids, because sometimes that's all they have to look forward to, you know? I did want to also talk about, last week, well, the last time we met, I forgot to speak about it, but Yee-Paw. Yee-Paw has been going on for, phew, almost 40 years now. And a lot of our students participate in it, and it's from kids from 5 to 18. And it really, really gives them a sense of family, spiritual. You know, a lot of them learn about God and/or whomever it is you may pray to, but these kids become grounded. They begin to learn about themselves and learn how to ask for help and ask adults for help and each other. So, they play the drums, they sing, they dance, they do step, they do all of this stuff, which opens the door for when they come to school, and they have the step team and things like that. So, next year, you guys, all look into getting your kids involved in either Wee-Paw, which is 5 to 11-years-old, or Yee-Paw from 12 to 18. And it's very diverse, it's kids from all walks of life, the chapel supports them. And this is all started by Leslie Parker Burns from Arlington Church of God. Also, Tumble Together is back again, which is a free community wash day. So, I want to make sure that all of our families know about this. It's through the city of Akron, Yours Truly, where the city pays for the residents to wash their clothes, up to three loads, provide all the detergent, and they also provide a meal. You never know, this might be the only meal that someone gets that day, but it's a nice dinner. So, it's a free event, it's July 14th, I'm sorry, gosh, August, I wish it was still July, August 14th, so this coming up Thursday, from 2:00 to 6:00, at Wash, I'm sorry, West Side Laundromat, 853 Copley Road. So, again, West Side Laundromat, 853 Copley Road, this Thursday, August 14th, from 2:00 to 6:00. You can wash up to three loads, no charge to you, free meal and free detergent. So, just bring yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other board member reflections? Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give a special shout-out to Schumacher CLC PTA, who was recognized again as being a national PTA School of Excellence. And so, for those of you who are not aware of this program, it's a national program, a recognition program, and it's a commitment between school administrators and parents and families to create a welcoming environment based on the PTA's six national standards for family-school partnerships. That include welcoming families, communicate effectively, support student success, speaking up for every child, sharing power, and collaborating with community. And so, those steps include enrolling, and you get a toolkit that guides you in gathering and analyzing feedback from the community, in the school. You create and implement an action plan, you reflect and summarize the progress, and then you celebrate your success. I know we've spoken a lot about Schumacher CLC over this past academic year, because they do so many great things as a result of being a part of this program. And so, I'd have wanted to acknowledge them, their outgoing principal, Mr. Hayes, and their PTA president, Janess Gilbert Mills, and Vice President Jasmine Baker, and encouraging everybody as we go back into our school years to get involved with your local PTAs. You don't have to always be a parent or a guardian. If you're just concerned about kids and want to be part of the solution, that is an avenue. But any PTAs out there who are interested in this very valuable, helpful program can go to pta.org to get more information. And again, congratulations, Schumacher CLC PTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Autry. Are there any other board member community reflections?
All right, thank you, Seena. We'll move on to the President's Report. I'm so grateful to hear all, everything that's been shared, and I do have a question, I think you highlighted it, because part of my report is I was going to inquire about PTAs. Because this weekend, I went to, there was a housing symposium, and we had the president of Helen Arnold's PTA there, Shamika Pullum, and she was talking to me. I didn't even know she was the president of, shoot, sorry, Helen Arnold's CLC, who does a lot of those things that you mentioned. And so, I'm glad you get that information about pta.org, because I did tell her, as well as, I understand that Buchi is the president now at Bookdo, as far as how to connect on a larger scale to be highlighted. I know many things are happening at Helen Arnold's CLC that aligns with that. And so, I would like to make sure that it's uniform as far as the PTAs is getting connected and highlighted, and they have, they know the flow of the rubric to get the same recognitions, because these things are happening in our active PTAs. So, I definitely wanted to shout that out. As I stated, this past Saturday, Freedom Block hosted the Housing Symposium at Emmanuel Christian Academy. And the event, it brought together housing advocates, educators, parents, and community leaders to address housing instability, a far-reaching issue that touches the lives of many of our students and families. And as you may recall, my previous report, when I highlighted, and we talked about I Promise, the I Promise Village, and how it's very important when we have these certain wraparound services, and that we have partners that are able to offer housing stability to some of our students. Because it's more than just a social issue when we talk about housing, it is also an educational one. And so, as a school district and a board, we should be just as much engaged. As I understand, the last data that I looked at, nearly 10% of APS students, which was approximately 2,000 at the time, when I inquired of Project Rise, are homeless students. However, I always question that number, because if you're from this community, you understand that homeless and transient students, especially from a certain cultural background, are taught not to share information. So, you can be sleeping on your friend's floor or auntie's floor, and no one knows that you're homeless. So, the number, the 10%, is only what we have that's documented. Some of these students are in shelters, they're in hotels, they just lack permanent housing. And these situations often result in these students having anxiety, uncertainty in the classroom, which then leads to absenteeism, learning delays, and behavioral challenges. The reason I thought this was very important, and I was very engaged, because the Freedom Block did a phenomenal job with the symposium, is because since I've been on the board, and this is the end of my first term, every time we had student board members come, and even some teachers, they talked about the mental health. That was, that's a recurring theme, is mental health. And so, these students, we know, and even some teachers, are facing mental health issues and traumas, and how are we dealing with that? We know in education, we have a lot of buzzwords, trauma-informed, right? And so, teachers become aware, some teachers that have the character and are hard to engage, of what they can do to help meet the needs and navigate some of the traumas that their students experience in the classroom. But I can't help but to recall that the counselor from East, when she came and presented, Courtney, I'm sorry, I cannot recall her last name, from East, and she explained how we are ill-equipped to deal with these, a lot of the trauma that these students face in a way that can help them to thrive in a classroom. And so, not only are the counselors not equipped, the teachers are not either. And so, this spills over, and it does impact the overall educational experience and landscapes in our school. Board colleagues and members of our organization, I think this is important, because how can we collectively come together to seriously address this that has been presented to us and about the emotional health of our students, our teachers, and other staff members within our building, because we know that this overall impacts the whole learning experience. So, what things and mechanisms can we put in place? How can we leverage our relationships? Because we understand there's a cost associated with everything. So, how can we properly leverage our community partnerships in order to put things that are necessary to improve the overall mental health of our organization, students, and teachers, so that they can be positioned to thrive and to do well? Additionally, we know as a district, we have Project Rise, which is our McKinney Vito-funded program, which is great, and they're doing a lot of great things. We also have collaborations with the United Way. We know we have our different pantries and at our various schools that offer resources. But again, it's about being very intentional to leverage even more relationships and wraparound services for our students. Lastly, this week, I also attended a professional development that aligns with our focus of whole child development. And it was a workshop presented by Johnny Reed of Project Heal. And it aligns with everything that all of us have been presented with today, board members, and even the presentations of our summer program. And it deals with a healing-centered learning approach. And this approach moves beyond trauma-informed education by focusing on asset-based strategies that affirm student identity, build resilience, and strengthen community connections, emphasizing collective healing and the belief that every child has the capacity to drive, I'm sorry, to thrive despite challenges. So, it's basically just informing and equipping students with the proper tools, that a teacher or the type of counselors that we have in our buildings will not be equipped to necessarily address when these students face traumas as far as murders, students who unalive themselves. I had a student share with me a couple of weeks ago, that was at a summer program, that she was really in a way, because one of her middle school classmates at Bookdo Middle unalive themselves. And she, I said, well, we have services, how did that work for you? And she said, well, originally, they came and they And she said, well, originally they came and they talked to the whole class and met with us, but it was nothing after that. And it's a capacity problem in resources. And so again, this is why my charge and my challenge to us all is how can we effectively lever relationships that necessarily does not have to come out of general funds, but with all these community organizations and partnership that can help us service this need. Lastly, I would like to congratulate Dr., I believe the name is pronounced Yanik Rice Lamb, who was a 1976 graduate of Buc-Do High School, on being named the Journalism Educator of the Year, which is a prestigious award which recognizes exceptional service, commitment and academic guidance in the field of journalism. Dr. Rice Lamb's career as an independent journalist, author, professor and former chair of the Department of Media and Journalism and Film at Howard University has paved the way for countless African-American journalists to enter newsrooms across, across the country. Her achievements are a source of pride for Akron Public Schools and an inspiration to our current students. So again, that's a 1976 graduate from Buc-Do High School. Great things are happening in the district and will continue to happen. That does conclude the President's Report. We do have now the Superintendent's Report. And Superintendent Ali, you have some updates.
Thank you, President Jackson. First, I would like to put a spotlight on our G A R Foundation and Akron Public Schools, which are proud to announce the three-year renewal of Essential Experiences. The Elementary Essential Experiences Learning Initiative guarantees that every pre-K through fifth grade APS scholar can participate in a high-quality curriculum-based learning experience outside of the classroom. The experiences are designed to deepen inquiry, build community connections, career aspirations, deepen academics and promote our portrait of an elementary scholar skills. Each elementary grade level is paired with one Akron-area arts and culture institution to host scholars onsite each year, serving around 9,000 students annually. We recently completed the sixth year of the Essential Experiences. Both the Board of Education and the G A R Foundation approved another three years of this collaborative initiative. It is a joint press release, which was released recently on July 29th, which was also included in your Friday notes. So at this time, I would like for us to take a moment to enjoy a video of our students.
Could we put together a program that serves every single kid?
Some children in our own community have never been to some of these cultural landmarks.
It has really helped teachers open their eyes that the whole community is a classroom.
I feel like there's a spark that can happen.
Getting kids to ask what if.
What can I be? What else is needed in the world that maybe I can contribute to?
The growth in students is incredible.
And I, I love the fact that it's for every kid.
And they get to have a full experience because we're touring them around the zoo. We're doing all of these really cool stations.
They're fun and they're really surprising. You learn a lot of stuff.
This program really feels like our community just opening its arms to the children of Akron Public Schools.
And these aren't just field trips, these aren't just learning experiences, these are essential experiences.
At this time, please help me welcome and recognize our G A R leaders who help to ensure this work is possible for our scholars. I see Laura Decola, who is the G A R Senior Program Officer for Education. If she would please come forth and share a few words with us.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Outley. And thank you to the board for renewing this investment and this deep commitment. I'll be super brief. All I want to say is that G A R, I'd love you to know, is extremely proud of this program, of this partnership with Akron Public Schools and with the cultural institutions that we partner with. We're honored to see that all children, not just a few, all children in the elementary grades get to have these experiences in our community that are memorable and that do exactly what we want that to do. Experiences that deepen their learning, open their eyes to the possibility of what if, spark that natural curiosity and make learning deeper and, and of course, fun. And so I'd also like to thank, in addition to you all and the leadership at APS, three of the APS folks who are closest to this work and who really make the magic happen. And that's Marcy Ebride, Beth Winder and Tricia Kelly, who has some sort of magic wand that makes all the kids go everywhere and do everything and everything run smoothly. So thank you all. We're proud to be your partner and we're happy to see this continue on for the next few years.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to provide a presentation regarding our retention and recruitment efforts. So if our team could please come up. After the presentation, they will field any questions from the board.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Board Members, Superintendent and Treasurer. Tonight, we are here to share our recruitment strategies for both staff and students. Before we discuss the specific actions initiatives, we want to emphasize one key point, our number-one recruitment strategy. That strategy is ensuring that every single person in Akron Public Schools understands that they are an ambassador for APS. Regardless of your role, whether you're a classroom teacher, you're in the classroom, on the bus, in an office, in the cafeteria or maintaining our facilities, you represent Akron Public Schools every day. The way we interact with families, students, colleagues and our community shapes the way we are seen by others. With that, as our foundation, we'll now walk through the targeted strategies and concrete steps we're taking to actively recruit and retain both students and staff.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, Mr. Bowers. So we, we have a, a slideshow, obviously with a lot of information. Why, I didn't break it, she's...
Oh, it's turned on.
Okay, so we, we have a slideshow with, with a lot of information and dense explanations. There will be an opportunity at the end to ask questions. So not to stick a pin in it when you see it, but stick a pin in it when you see it. Jot it down and then when we come back to the end, we'll be able to answer your questions in full. We're going to live a lot in this theory. If we recruit, retain and develop staff and deliver quality instruction, engaging experiences and welcoming environments, then the community of Akron will thrive. We're going to talk a little bit about, and mostly about cornerstone three, but you will hear all of our cornerstones woven through, every cornerstone woven through this presentation. What Mrs. Carter talked about was every employee, every educator, every opportunity. And so my partner in this work and now newly joining this recruitment and retention effort is Mrs. Wilma Alexander, who's going to take us through these first, this first slide.
First slide, okay. So, good evening, everyone, I'm Wilma. As Larry said, I'm just joining this year. And so there's a little learning curve here for me. But before I get started, let me say that I am a product of this. I actually started here in Akron Public Schools as an educational assistant. I have worked my way through to be here today. And I shared that with Larry a little bit ago. So under the recruitment and retention, we're looking to attract, engage and employ high-quality talent to serve our students. Implement a multifaceted strategy that combines universal, targeted and creative initiatives to build a robust and diverse talented pipeline. And under that, we're going to proactively build relationship with our candidates. And I'm currently working in that space right now to enhance our district's reputations as an employer of choice. Candidate care, streamline that process to improve the candidate experience that they have here in Akron to where they want to return to work here in Akron.
Thank you. She said she was just going to do one slide, otherwise she'd be doing this thing. So one of the things that Superintendent Outley has charged us with is to make sure that we all see everybody in this work. And so it's not just that this recruitment lives with Mrs. Wilma Alexander, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cohen Alexander or Mr. Johnson or Mrs. Carter. It's that everybody sees this work in every part of their, in every part of their departments. So we worked tirelessly this year with our Communication Department to ensure that we had a comprehensive communication plan so that we had better online presence and the information was streamlined. You do not want me marketing really important information because marketing is a, is a professional skill and there are things that our marketers see that I just, I just don't see. And, and so they, we, they've been great partners, making sure that we get the right information out to the right people strategically, aiming at the people that we need, the candidates that we need. Our goal this year was to expand our candidate pool. We worked with neighboring districts through partnerships with Camera. Camera is a joint, was a joint effort with a lot of minority groups to, a, a lot of school districts to recruit minority teachers to our profession. This year, we did job fairs, we hosted quarterly talent fairs and employment fairs to try and recruit really the highest quality of candidates. And I talked about it just a little bit, the messaging, every employee, every student, every opportunity. That means when you're in the, when you're in the line at Walmart or Acme, when there's an opportunity to talk about Akron Public Schools, you talk about Akron Public Schools. I talk about Akron Public Schools all the time because I live with educators and, and partners. Targeted, so this, this is a little bit, a little bit more honed in. We worked, we work with university partners to ensure that our pre-service efforts lead right back to an application with Akron Public Schools. That means strong relationships with our schools, pre-service commitment, so field experience, student teachers. We have metrics now that we haven't had in the past with our, with our partners, the University of Akron and Kent. We also work with Walsh and Ashland, all of the, all of the surrounding universities, but our, our commitment is with our closest, our closest universities. And we have some metrics to support around that. This year, we did some on-the-spot hiring, much to the dismay of our hiring coordinators. They were coming back and I said, well, I got a couple more letters of intent. If there was a candidate that jumped off the page at me and said, I want to be in Akron Public Schools, we're hiring on the spot. And we have, we're, we'll be interviewing another candidate, another kiddo that we just, a former Akron Early College alum who is coming back to Akron to teach in one of our middle schools. Super excited about that. I remember him when he was just a little fella. No, no, not him, he's another one. And then the, the last one on this one is to really attract interested candidates to our alternative pathway. If you graduated in something other than education, but you find your calling back in our classrooms and Akron Public Schools, we have a pathway for that and we're, we're looking to build on that. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then our more intensive efforts, and we've talked about this a lot, our Grow Your Own Pipeline, where we're enhancing our employee development. There are a lot of other districts around us in this area. And I say this with great pleasure and prejudice, I do not believe that they have any, they're anywhere close to our professional development. The professional development that our teachers and our staff get is world-class. And we are looking to beef that up even more. Superintendent has given us some charges to be different, to be innovative, and that's exactly what we plan on doing. The last thing that I want to say about this slide is we, we are going to talk a little bit about collaborating and recruiting our own retired teachers. There is a process that is spelled out. There is more information that we'll talk about a little bit later on if there's questions. But you're actually going to see the first step later on today in your agenda. I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry. And we talked a little bit about staffing agencies. I know, remember Autry has challenged us to, to look outside to see if there are other staffing agencies that can support our needs. And there are. Teach for America is another one of those, for example, is another agency that, that specializes in recruiting teachers, training them and then bringing them to, to districts. That does come at a cost, somewhere between per teacher, anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000 per, per candidate. Now, there's a deal, if you get 20 candidates, you know, there's, there's a little bit of a, a break on the cost. But with any staffing agency, there's going to be a cost. Teach for America offers it per, per candidate. There are other staffing agencies that we are working with now that we would look at, it would be per hour. But there's, we, we don't have that information yet that is too come. And then this, this piece here is, it says investment and innovation intentionally. Dr. Hodo has challenged us relentlessly to look at, what is it? How do we increase revenue? And you know, that's not about a levy, it's about how do we get students back into our district? And so what, what this talks about is how do we keep teachers so that teachers want to stay? And how do we move students into coming back to Akron Public Schools? We talked a little bit about some opportunities today in Superintendent's, in the Superintendent's Office. None of those are ready to share out. We just asked permission to, to go through the design process and think that through so that when we have the innovation to share, it is ready and the cake is baked for you. The next thing that we're going to talk about, that we, not we, but Dr. Lash is going to talk through, is the student recruitment piece.
Before you take your seat, can you just give the board an idea of what's coming towards them regarding growing our own?
Yes.
Like how we talk with our eyes.
Yes. So we, we are, when we talk about growing our own, we're, we're talking about high school and so, and, and further. So there are a number of students that, that I've met. One, you just saw, you probably saw an article today in, in Signal, I believe, it was on Savian. He's, he's one of the students that we are recruiting to return to Akron Public Schools. Now, he has said unforgivingly that he plans on being the superintendent of Akron Public Schools. So we, we are absolutely 100% recruiting him to return. We will keep our hands wrapped around him and support him. He'll be at Kent on a full ride, close enough so he can do his field experience right here in Akron Public Schools. And hopefully, hopefully, we will be able to offer him a position right here in Akron Public Schools. It's not just Savian. Part of this Grow Your Own is to keep our babies from kindergarten all the way to employment. That would be me. I was a, I was a, a student in Akron Public Schools as a kindergartner and, and I'm now still serving the district. So it's, it's more than just Grow Your Own from outside, but it is taking care of our own. You'll see a little bit more about Savian, maybe a little bit later next week. Dr. Lash?
Good evening. Oh, there's another.
I just wanted to thank, thank you, Mr. Johnson, that was excellent. Dr. Lash?
Tonight, I would like to provide a brief, kind of high-level overview of student recruitment and where we are now, what we're doing and where we're headed. And you can see that this work ties directly to our strategic plan and specifically cornerstone four, that speaks to our partnerships, family and community engagement. And this objective specifically around increasing the number of Akron resident scholars in our public schools. And so I've highlighted here three strategies that speak to a fully funded communications and marketing plan, countywide awareness that highlights the uniqueness of our district and the programming that we offer, and looking at our enrollment data to really kind of delve into reasons why our families choose outside of, of Akron Public Schools. And so with this goal of increasing enrollment, again, we'll talk through the current enrollment landscape and our efforts and opportunities. So this chart right here is the district's enrollment trend as reported on the state report card. So you can see kind of, and it goes back the last five years. So you'll see the year post-COVID where we were and how things have transpired. So, you'll see the year post-COVID where we were and how things have transpired up to last year. We ended the year, again, this is what's reported to the state and comes out on our state report card, we ended the year with 19,737 students. And according to our student information system, right now, our current enrollment is around 19,300. And I say that, but I can tell you that our engagement center is busy, busy, busy. This is that time of year where our families kind of kicking into gear. It's like it's August, it's time for school, and so, we see, I had a phone call with a student just today that is coming back from Tow Path to North High School. So, those things are, we will change. The number tomorrow will probably be 100 or 200 more than, than where we sit. And so, when we think about our recruitment efforts, we know that recruitment matters, and so, we've really thought about this in the sense of a year-long campaign with key points, if you will, key kind of happenings in, in the district. And so, open enrollment generally starts in October, and we run that through December. And so, that's where, I think you all are very familiar with that, we run intra-district and inter-district open enrollment. And I'm going to show you on the next slide, but we're very excited to showcase the programming at each of our high schools in a different kind of way than what we've done in, in the past, so I'll save that. And then, we get through open enrollment, and we kind of gear up and get ready for preschool kindergarten registration. So, we hit that pretty hard, and typically in March, we have a district-wide registration night where all of our elementaries are open. We market that and encourage our families to do kindergarten registration early so that we can kind of get them in the system, and then they're, they're also able to take advantage of our summer programming, as you, as you just heard. And then, when we kind of gear down from preschool kindergarten registration, again, there are pushes and different things happening throughout the year, we start to look at our summer outreach and different events that we will have a presence at through the summer. Last summer, thanks to Laura and the G A R Foundation, had dollars to be able to do some different interesting things with, with programming over the summer to push kindergarten registration. This summer, we've been to the Remedy Church, Back to School Shoe Giveaway already, the West Akron 5K, the You Matter at Joy Park, Backpack Adventure at the Zoo, and we have a host of other events coming up, the Faith Place, Block Party, the Akron City Festival, Hoops for Homeless. There are several. If we learn about events, we try to tap different people to represent Akron Public Schools, but we like to have a presence of the school district within our community. And I should say that this is not just a student services or student and family services initiative. This is, as Ms. Carter opened up, this is all of our, our jobs, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. But, again, the community showcases, cross-departmental work here with college and career academies, the various other departments, communications, of course, to really look at how we've done the eighth grade showcase in the past, and really getting our families out, and thinking, how can we make it more meaningful? How can we get them into the buildings? Because having been a principal and recruiting students, sometimes it makes a difference when you're in the building. We might have our perception of what happens there, but when we can physically get into the building, kind of feel that culture, see the programming, interact with the adults, we kind of walk away with a different feel. And so, we're very excited to have each of our high schools host a showcase, so you see the dates, mark your calendar. I expect to see each and every one of you there. But we are excited to open up the schools, invite not only our current or rising eighth graders to come and check out our programming, but also our families that live in the, the city and within the district boundaries, but again, are choosing to educate their students elsewhere. We invite those families in, and we will also have, of course, our human resources department available to, again, just showcase the, the district. And so, again, very, very grateful for our grant dollars with the Expanded Opportunities Grant and our partnership with CCAA to sustain that work. And so, behind all of that, you might be thinking, well, how do you get these things pushed out? We have had a longstanding relationship with, with dot org to help us with our marketing campaigns, and Dr. Hodo with the Communications Department in folding into some of that work also and, and helping us. And so, within our marketing and communication strategy, of course, we have our internal sorts of things that we do. We can send email blasts out to our families, texts, and all calls to let our families know, hey, this is open enrollment season, or this is kindergarten registration, or we have this event going on, so we have those internal pushes. But we also utilize traditional methods, billboards and postcards. I don't know if you've ever been driving down Market and have seen some of the, the billboards. I know I feel pretty proud when I see them, that not only, yes, is that my work, but I didn't design it, but definitely work with the partners to do so, but also that that's our district. We're up there, we're, you know, showcasing who we are. And then, our digital marketing with our landing page, last year, we created a Y APS page that our families could be driven to so that they can see, why, why do you want to make that choice for Akron Public? Here are all the wonderful things that we offer. Google searches, where I know many of you, I'm sure, go to Google and type something in when you're searching. Well, we pay for our information. If you search for kindergarten, Akron Public Schools pops to the list. We pay for organic and paid social media advertisement and also video shorts on, on YouTube. So, if you've ever been on Facebook and seen our posts come through, and Dr. Hodo and dot org can speak to this best, but there are a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that you can kind of push and target different areas. And so, you may or may not see videos depending on what, you know, your, your feeds typically look like, but I have seen them, and they've been pretty wonderful. And so, those are some of our, our current efforts. And so, when we think about our opportunities, so we know that there's always more work to do, right, in places where we can grow. And so, we're looking for those ways to strengthen the promotion of our programming and our district opportunities, because one of the things that we realize is, we know the wonderful things that happen in the district, but how do we make sure that our family and the broader community knows? Understand reasons families choose outside of APS. We started with dot org, some work around a survey, and then picked it up with communications to develop a postcard that we mailed out to families that we know live in district but attend out to understand from them, what made you make that choice? What is it that you look for in your, your schooling for your, your student? What would make you want to come back to Akron Public? Those kinds of things. And so, we didn't get the response number-wise that we were looking for compared to the number of postcards that we mailed out, but we did get good information. And one of the things that we've learned is that direct mail is, is one mode, and so we need to figure out, how do we get to those, those families? Again, ongoing general and targeted recruitment, retention, reclamation marketing plan. So, in addition to those events that happen at different times, you know, what are the in-between pushes that, that we're doing? And the final point, that we are all walking billboards. We carry that, that power in how we message the district, how we interact. I won't reiterate the words that Mrs. Carter said, but we are all walking billboards for the organization that we work for and that we represent. And so, we have a, a great responsibility there. And so, with that, we are APS forward. We know that Akron is a great city, a great community. We know that Akron Public Schools is the cornerstone of the city's success. And so, how do we get that message out to the, the broader community? That Akron Public Schools is the place where great things happen. It is the place to work. It is the place to live, thrive, grow, and achieve. And so, with that, we will open the floor for any questions that you might have.
Yes, Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two quick comments and one quick question. First, I would like to say thank you both for all of this. I appreciate the recruitment. I saw a really nice article on APS celebrates seven scholars recipients for Grow Your Own program. And I would like to, what you guys are doing is changing the trajectory of when we have people from Akron that go to school to become teachers, they come to APS for student teaching, and especially our men, they don't get hired. They go to Cleveland because Cleveland takes them. We don't accept them. So, they're good enough to come to APS for student teaching, but not good enough for us to hire them. And I've heard more than five to six different male teachers that have said, "We don't get the jobs at APS." So, I would love to change that and just make a difference. I'm excited to see some of the data, you know, in the future. Also, thank you, Dr. Lash, for giving the information about Tow Path. With one student coming back, that's still huge, because as I said before, a lot of our students leave because they cannot afford the $50 credit recovery classes. So, you know, I'm still, you know, wanting to hear how we can change that to keep our students here at APS versus them going to Tow Path. I think we've lost like 100 and, I can't remember the number, Ms. Autry, that you had sent me, but about 120-something students that have left the district to go to Tow Path because of the credit recovery. So, if we can pull some more back in, that would be awesome news. And then, also, as you stated, celebrating, you know, APS and so forth, do we have any yard signs that say APS or APS Proud or something like that? I think I saw one in your yard. But do we have some that we can share or?
I'm looking at Dr. Hodo. She's like, "Don't look at me, Dr. Lash." That's part of our multi-prong approach. When we think about a countywide kind of awareness, how can we get APS Proud or whatever that little yard sign or whatever looks like in our businesses where our families frequent in yards? Yes, it's part of our approach. So, that contract will, will be coming for, for approval.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Member Harrison and Alexander. Member Harrison, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I would really love to have this in a committee where we can really start to unpack some things. And certainly, one of the questions, and I know it's not, not to be answered here, but three people come to mind, Anell Phillips, Courtney Brown, and Bryce Harris, who hopefully we, we can keep them in the district or we have them in the district, but we receive a lot of information about someone who wanted to come, who wanted to stay, and, but I would love to have a more robust conversation in a committee meeting because it really goes to question, how much are we losing when we lose a teacher? How much do we lose training a teacher for a year then losing a teacher? But I would love to have that conversation, I'd love to see this presentation in a committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Harrison. Vice President Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have a comment and a question, too. The comment is, we got to educate our, our parents, too, and that doesn't come just from inside the district. That's going to be all of us who are outside, all of us who are board members and those who are, who are in contact with people. So, we got to, we got to sell the district. So, we got to educate parents about the district and educate them about things that they don't know about. If they have questions, give them the answers they need so that they can be aware of what's going on. And the other, my question is, I know we look at HBCUs, but I want to say, how many do we look at outside of Ohio? And how many of those have we gotten or tried to make contact with to, to develop a pipeline from that university to Akron Public Schools? I think if we look at some of those outside of Ohio and, and make a contact, we'll maybe be able to push some of them to us so we can get more males, because we need male teachers. I mean, women are doing an outstanding job, what they've done forever, but we need some males, and I think some African-American males would be perfect. So, maybe looking at some of those HBCUs that are outside of, of Ohio as well to build a pipeline so we have a, a direct pipeline to Akron from those universities, so. That's a question and a comment, but you don't have an answer right now.
No. Yes. Superintendent just charged us with that. It's, how do we invest and recruit minorities to Akron Public Schools? And part of, one of our strategies is to, is to find the incentives to bring those students to Ohio. It is, it is not easy. Bringing, bringing males to education is not going to be going to HBCUs. It is going to be a longer, it's going to be a longer recruitment plan. I think Savion is one of those. We'll be hiring another one here in a couple days. So, I think it's, there's going to be a lot more strategies around, how do we invest in our minority males to make sure that, that we are, we are a destination for them?
Because there's some statistics that have been out there and researched that all kids, you know, when they have an African-American male learn, and they talk about all kids, whether they're black, white, Hispanic, Laotian, or whatever they may be, that they learn well with those individuals. So, maybe that's something we can go back and look at the research as well, and maybe that can tell us something as well.
Member Autry and Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for this information. I really appreciate it. And I just wanted to make a few comments, and I think I've shared with my colleagues before. You know, we have all of these scoreboards that we invested in about 10 years ago that are in all of our high school gyms, and I think that's just something we're missing. You know, we have captive audiences at these sporting events, so maybe we can utilize those scoreboards even more at halftime, et cetera. I also, just this weekend, I was looking at some postings for, on the housing market, and I saw several companies, you know, they list the schools in the neighborhood, they don't even mention Akron Public Schools at all. And I think that's a shame for any real estate company that's doing that, because it takes a lot of work to list every other school except Akron Public School. And so, I don't know what the relationships are, who the person is that we can connect with, but they should be happy to share that this is a viable district to come to. And then, just lastly, no, not lastly, Akron in Action. I know that's upcoming. I know I attended one, and it was absolutely amazing commercial for our district, and I'm hoping we get some footage this next time so that we can showcase that. I mean, it was just, I was blown away at the Akron in Action event, so hopefully we'll utilize that. And then, in terms of Teach for America, I know I keep bringing that up. I know, whatever it is about Teach for America that people don't like, I don't know what it is, but I'm thinking about the staffing at these schools who have been inconsistent for years and years and years and years. My understanding, one of the benefits of Teach for America is that they have to have a two-year commitment. And so, with teachers, you know, that sometimes leave, turnover, et cetera, I think that could be a benefit to some of our schools who are struggling with keeping teachers in place for a minimum of two years. That could be helpful. And so, the cost associated with not having consistent teachers, you got to weigh that out, too. So, that's all I want to say, and thank you again. I look forward to hearing more.
Yes, Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Thank you for telling me about the Y APS webpage. I did not know about it. And for anyone else who's visiting for the first time, there's a video that will automatically play as soon as you get to the page. So, you might want to have your laptop on mute for that. But I do also concur to what Member Harrison said, this, both of these, I think, are separate topics, and both of them need dug deeply into in committee. So, in preparation for committee, I am, I'm sure all of us around this table are keenly aware of the cost of mailers. So, I think I would agree that the mailer might not be a viable data collection point. So I think I would agree that the mailer might not be a viable data collection point in the future. But I'm very curious, is there a grade level that there is a drop off of students? I know that generally, as a city, there are less students. I live in a neighborhood that there are 80 homes, and when that neighborhood was built, 75 of them were families of three and families of four. And right now, there are eight families of kids in that whole neighborhood. Now, we're the only ones that go to Akron Public Schools. So there's also challenge and opportunity. And so I'm wondering if there's a grade level that's a drop off. One of the things I forgot to mention during my community reflection is an ongoing question about whether students get busing or transportation if they go to a different school. So there are people going to different schools, so I wonder if there's drop off when there's a transition of school. So that is just in preparation for that. I do have a couple of questions for today on the other presentation. And so the first is for you, Mr. Johnson. You made a comment, and I wrote down in my notes, you said, "The first step is later today in the agenda." So if you could let me know which part of that, what part is late in, is in today's agenda for that? That's my first question, then I have a follow-up. Thanks.
You're referring to recruiting retired teachers. The first part in that process is, I believe it's 60 days, Mr. Wamas, if I mess this up, I believe it's 60 days prior to you're actually taking action. We have to notify the public that we intend to hire a retired Akron Public Schools teacher.
Thank you. So in our agenda today, what we're doing is we are providing notice that we intend to hire retired teachers.
Correct.
So thank you for letting us know about that relevant part of today's presentation to today's voting items. I really appreciate that. And then I have a follow-up question on Teach for America since it was brought up. I think, I know a lot of people, the cost is the problem, but also knowing that we do have a very successful Grow Your Own program. I remember when we got our new desks, whatever this is, the teacher who made the desk, and then it was a different teacher who made the metalwork there, too, that both of those were in our Grow Your Own program where they were earning their licensure while they were teaching here in a similar fashion that a Teach for America-type program does. For clarification, though, do we currently contract with Teach for America?
No.
Okay. I'm asking that because at 5:16 today, the district put out a statement that said, I'm going to try to find it, that we, the district also maintains its collaboration with Teach for America to recruit recent college graduates to teach in underserved communities. So is that statement that just went out basically in the beginning of our meeting, is that true?
We are in contact. We have been in contact with them. We do not have a contract with them. We have not hired anybody from Teach for America. It's a possibility. I think November is the deadline when all those contracts have to happen. So to the extent that we are exploring options, yes.
That's very confusing. But thank you for saying that we do not currently have a contract. Thank you.
Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, members of the board, so it is important that we do some of this work in committee. We started this board meeting at 5:30. It is now 6:55, and we have not gotten to our main agenda items. I saw on the presentation, and I've seen presentations throughout since 5:30, 5:29, I have seen very few numbers. So if we're going to talk about our summer camps and what's happened with that, then how many, how many children do we actually have in summer camp? What was that? But on your presentation, I'm looking for some measurable outcome, as I am with everything. Measurable outcome, why? Because that's how we determine how we're going to pay the costs of doing, teaching our children. But I have not heard any measurable outcome. I saw one slide that talks about our children and where we were and what has happened. I think you said that now someone, we have 19,700 children. We was thought to have, but we actually have 19,300 children. And so what happened there? So how many children have we lost? And I thought when we started the beginning of the year, we started off with close to 20,000 students. So what happened there? So, and how many teachers are we trying to recruit? Did we try to recruit? And how many did we actually recruit? A measurable outcome. How many students did we try to recruit? And how many students did we actually recruit? A measurable outcome. And how do we know if we're being successful? How do we know what's working and what's not working? You know, we have to determine what it costs to educate our children. And we know that the more children we have and the more children we're able to recruit, then the better we can educate our children. But I'm not hearing that. I have no doubt that we are all engaged, and we are involved, and we are happy and all of that, but it costs to educate. So how many teachers were we planning on recruiting, and how many did we actually recruit? How many students did we try, are we trying to recruit for this new year? And how many did we actually? And what is the actual number of students that we lost this year? And what do we plan on doing about that? A measurable outcome. And when you tell us you want us to show up for an event, then what do you want us to do at that event? Measurable outcome. And when I talk to the voters in the City of Akron and ask them to support what we're doing in this school system, I need some numbers to be able to say, if I'm asking you to pay this much in millage because we have this many children and we want to be able to treat them and teach them so that they are able to pass our proficiency test, then what will that cost the average voter? And we can do that if we find out how many children we have, how many children we recruited, how many children we lost, the millage that they're expected to pay for a $100,000 home that way. That is the way I feel comfortable talking about what this school system, who has a budget of a half a billion dollars, is doing with the monies. It's words. I see a lot of words on the, on your presentation. I see very, very few numbers. But when you talk to the individuals that pay for educating our children, they want to know, how much is it going to cost? And how much did it cost us to recruit two or three teachers? And what did it cost us when we lost four, 500, or 1,000 students? So again, I would agree with the members that have said that this is the kind of information that we need to dig into in our committees, that we need to be able to, while we're feeling good about what we're doing, to be able to say, if we're able to show to the voters, to the individuals that's paying for all of us to be here, how much is it costing them to do that? And what are they really getting for their money?
Thank you, Member Sykes. Any other board member questions?
What, wait a minute. Madam President, do you not, any answers tonight on measurable outcomes?
Yes, so I could speak to a few, Members Sykes. So you mentioned, we did start the year last year with just over 20,000 students. And the slide that was shown was where we ended the year according, you got the clicker, according to the secure data center. There we go. We ended the year with 19,737. So of course, you know, there are a lot of changes in there with students moving. So yep, we can surely pull the data to let you know the change and where students, if they open enrolled out or moved out or withdrew to charter schools. That is data that we've been working with our technology department so that we can, again, as I showed you, one of the strategies for us to be able to analyze our own enrollment data so we can understand better what's happening with the movement of our students. I do have, and I can share this with you, I do have the report of our open enrollment campaign last year, and it will tell you exactly what we paid for the campaign, the goals that we set in terms of enrollment, the goals that we set in terms of the number of applications and how we met each of those goals. And it also has metrics on the digital marketing that we utilize. Of course, we can't tell how many people saw the billboard, those kinds of things. But we do have metrics that we actually did back down to what did that mean for the number of dollars that were brought back into the district. So I can make sure that we share that. We also have metrics on our kindergarten enrollment campaign. This was high level, so I didn't, I knew we were on a short timeframe. But I do have those metrics that we can definitely bring to committee and delve into, and in the meantime, circle back to some of these other questions that you had so we can share that with you, especially about the change in the numbers of where we started last year versus where we ended.
So great questions, Member Sykes. The question about where did we start, it's not complicated, it's a sliding answer. So where we started in the spring of '25, let's say we were recruiting, I think we were short 20 paraprofessionals, and I think we had 30, I think we had 30 intervention specialists openings. So the numbers move and they slide throughout the course of the year. So there's not, my answer would be, we would recruit 300 teachers. The goal would be to recruit as many, every person that I spoke to. The answer, a more specific answer to vacancies, we started this kind of hiring season with elementary vacancies of teachers, 93 elementary vacancies, 61 filled, we have 32 left to fill. In middle school, we started with 59 vacancies, we filled 31. We have 28 left to fill. And in high school, we had 48 open vacancies, we filled 34, we have 14 left to fill. And in college career academies, we had 16 openings, we filled eight, and we still have eight left to fill. There'd be, I mean, another answer could, would be somewhere in the metrics of applications and time to fill and all of those things. I can get those, I can get that information, I can get that information to you as well.
Are there any additional follow-ups? Okay, well, I would say, I think what I'm hearing is like, is data-driven decision-making. At the board meeting, when we have the board meeting, it's an action meeting, and that's why I think the Student Success Committee, when that's rolling, a lot of stuff can be rolled out. But the committees tell the story, and then at the board meeting, the decisions are made. So the story, everything is laid out. And so what I'm hearing and my understanding, because you all start, you started off and you stated, we have metrics, 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 but it's just not printed, the numbers. Because you stated that the metrics exist, and the summer programs, they listed the numbers, because it was a 25% that was not filled, and it was over 3,000 students who attended the summer program. I think it's just easier when we see what we spent and what's the return on our investment. But also in the community, to a member Sykes' point, what I hear, how it's posited, a little different from how Ms. Sykes framed it, which is also a valid point, is I'm paying this money, and these kids can't even read. Like, what are y'all doing? That's how it's presented to me, where I'm paying, we paying, I don't want to pay any money for this levy and these kids, blah, blah. It's negative, right? So I think when we tell the story and how we frame things up is when we show percentage-wise our yearly, our AYP, our annual yearly progress. If we can show data points where our students start from kindergarten through whatever grade, this is the average of how our students perform if they start at APS and stay at APS for this long, which is some of the data that I inquired about as far per cluster. Because then it can tell a story of the improvements if we're putting in this program, right? And this is how the gains that we've had as a result of like the letters program, when we can say, hey, we implemented this, and now we've seen gains in literacy. And this is the percent. The people who approached me, that's the type of data. That's what I quote, it's like, oh, we did, we have this improvement, you know, this is what happened at Helen Arnold. The academic growth to show this is a direct return on your investment, because what comes out the school directly impacts the outlay of the city. So it's all interconnected. Just, I just wanted to say that the story can be told in committee, and then the hard facts, the data, the measurable stuff presented here. And it can be quick and succinct, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, President Jackson. That does conclude my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, I'll take a point of privilege. I do see that Mayor Malik has come, and so at this time, we'll have the mayor to present as far as a comment to share with the board, which you need to share. Thank you. Your counsel coming with you, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
He'll come grab me if I say something. I can't. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with all of you this evening. Just wanted to come and speak just briefly. I know we've been working throughout the summer on the School Resource Officer Contract for this upcoming year, and hopeful that we can get that finished tonight so that we can move forward in two weeks as we begin the new school year. I think this is an important program the city's had for many years, and I'm hopeful, I know we've had some back and forth today, and I think summer vision's coming to you later today. But I think this is very essential for our school and our district and our students. And so we appreciate the dialogue, and I just want to come and share that with all of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarity, we just, for transparency, present like this, because this is not something we would discuss in executive session. So if anyone is inquiring, thank you, Mayor Malik. Any comments or? Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to Mayor Malik. We certainly appreciate him taking the time to come down, and we certainly appreciate all of the dialogue that we have had since January of 2025 to try to put this agreement in place. And the, we have, really, as a board, have expressed our appreciation to the SRO program and how much we are grateful to the City of Akron for the partnership. We certainly want to continue to provide for our students, our staff, and to the board for the SRO program. And I would hope that we would be able to certainly come together and come to an agreement. I just don't think it's going to happen tonight because there are still some things that we have to go over, and we have to get some language together, and we want to be fair to all parties, and we want to certainly be ready to go with a clear understanding of how we're progressing forward. But certainly wanted to say that we look forward to the SROs returning to APS as we would welcome them here, and we welcome the partnership with the City of Akron. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Harrison. Mayor Johnson, you know, this is very unconventional, but you can have your follow-up because you can stay at the mic. So for your follow-up question.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to note that the next board meeting is in two weeks when school will have started. And so I, you know, really strongly say that if we want to move forward with the program this school year, we do need to have a contract today. And I know that our legal counsel's been in touch with APS Legal Counsel all day today, and that there have been several back and forths. And I believe we're in a place where we can move forward at the end of the day. Obviously, that's the board's decision, but really for all the parties involved, for our officers who have to make arrangements for our students, for everyone, I think we do need to move forward today. So this is my two cents, but I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Okay, currently, there is no treasurer report, so we'll move on. Is that correct, Mr. Bowers? There's, okay, thank you. We'll move on with the approval of our previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for July 28th of 2025?
I move to approve the July 28th meeting minutes.
It's been moved by a Member Autry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by a Member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next is our personnel recommendation, Superintendent Outley.
Thank you, President Jackson. Does the board have any questions about the personnel items for Section 10, professional staff and administrators?
Member Hall? Thank you, Madam President. Just really quick, as I read through our agendas and other agendas that we've had in the past, where we have replacements and we're hiring teachers or staff, I'm curious to find out what schools they're at. So we, and I'm not, maybe not asking for it to be in the agenda, or it can be, but it would be nice to know, especially where we have some schools that don't have consistent teachers, have substitutes always in the classrooms. It'd be nice to know where we need teachers at with schools. And it'd be also nice to know that if they're being replaced, or if they have substitutes. Because if we're doing this grow-your-own and all of this, it'd be nice to see that teachers are now filling the spots where there are substitute teachers that are consistent. So just a report, maybe November, December would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Any other personnel recommendation questions? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations presented in categories 10 through 20? Member Hall, you have another question?
I do. Usually, she says like 10, 11, 12, but we're doing all personnel. We keep switching it up, so I'm just.
No, that's me, that's not her, that's me.
So just really quick, Section 16, I know I've said this before, and I know that we're at a deficit and, you know, trying to cut back, but when we have these professionals and we're paying $13 an hour, I really, and I know this was brought up years ago regarding with the city trying to get people to, organizations, businesses, to start hiring at at least $15 an hour, which is kind of a decent wage for some, I just really want us to look at that. Because these teachers, paraprofessionals, whomever, at $13 an hour, I don't really think that's feasible. But we can also look at that at a different time, but I would like to see maybe $15 being at least a wage for our teachers or our staffing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall, Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Member Hall. Superintendent, as Member Hall reminded me, because I tried to lay in the plane and just vote on this if there's no other questions, so my apologies, Member Hall. Are there any other questions for any section? All right. Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations presented in categories 10 through 20?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by a member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from 12.2.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries on everything but 12.2, seven zero. 12.2 is six to one.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next will be the approval of the divisions, recommendations, resolutions, and, oh, yeah, resolutions and motions. Superintendent Outley.
Does the board have any questions about the division, recommendations, resolutions, and motions for Section 22? I wish to recommend, if there's no questions, the approval of the division of recommendations, resolutions, and motions in Section 22.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the division and recommendation and resolutions in Section 22?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been properly moved by Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by a member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our business affairs recommendation, Superintendent Outley.
Does the board have any questions for Section 23?
Thank you, Member Hall. Okay, I have a few of these. Thank you, Madam President. Do you mind if I just kind of go down the list, since we're just all of 23? Okay. For 23.1, well, really, this is pretty general for all. Do we still have that committee? I know previous Superintendent Robinson had a committee of people looking over contracts. We still have that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. 23.3, with the Apple purchase of mini MacBook, 29 MacBooks for Firestone CLC, what class is this for? Thank you for stating the school, I appreciate that. But what class will these 29 MacBooks, keyboards?
It's the visual art and design pathway at Firestone. This is their five-year replacement cycle for their Mac.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for that. See, that right there, that could have been right in there, and I could have read that and not even, you know, had to ask that question. So thank you about the replacements.
Right.
So thank you for that. 23.5, when it talks about the gas, and it says board-owned vehicles, what does that mean? Because I know we tend to use, you know, board a lot, and I don't want the community to ask, like, is this for our vehicles, things like that? So I know, I know it's not, but it reads in here, board-owned vehicles. So I just kind of wanted to be intentional with asking that question, because even when kids come down, they say, we got to come down to the board. You know? And sometimes they think, they think they're meeting with us, and they don't. And I know that's been, you know, brought up too before. Are these vehicles for maybe maintenance and that type of thing? Is those?
Correct.
Maintenance vehicles?
Do you need to say anything other than correct?
Okay, that's fine. So I would just probably encourage, and these are like my little sticky notes, maybe we change that language.
Okay.
Just get away from always saying board, because they can think it's a seven elected board members that things could be. So I'm just trying to, you know, help people with that.
Like, not privately owned?
They're not privately owned, it's.
That would be helpful.
Akron Public Schools vehicles. Yes.
District vehicles.
Say district.
District vehicles, or something like that, yeah. 23.9, we have leader in me, and maybe I should have reached out to you ahead of time to ask about that. Was that something presented to our committees about the leader in me?
This is a continuation, this is not the first year.
Got it, okay, thank you. Sorry, guys. Let's see, 23.10, it has the asbestos removal. Is this just a contract that we just keep them on hand with that? Or is this a particular building or buildings where we're going to be paying, not to exceed Ms. Faul.
If I'm not mistaken, this is just for as we need it. It's district-wide for any building as we need it.
Okay. Do we still, oh, no, okay. And I think last question, or, oops. 23.15, about the Chromebook repairs. So I just had a quick question about the Chromebook repairs. These students, do they get the same Chromebooks every year? And is it leading all the way through high school, same book? And we're just repairing what's broken?
Yes. And except for, like, when they're exiting at high school, we clean them, and then they get recycled.
Okay.
So they do turn them in. They keep them until they need to replace them.
Okay. Have we ever thought of maybe gifting the students when they graduate, since they have the same book all the way through? Just something to think about, the Chromebooks that they use all through, and then give new students fresh books, where we're not paying so much in fixing them all the time, or refurbishing or rehab, because maybe that cost could potentially be a new book.
We could look at comparing costs and let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last one, I promise. 23.20, I just want to say thank you, because this right here is a very, very good definition of what we're saving. Like Mrs. Sykes talked about, measurable outcomes. Here it says, no, this is saving $130,000. Thank you. Because it's showing that if we're switching and doing different things, we're saving money. So although $130,000 doesn't put a huge dent in the, what, 10, 11 million, it's still something. So thank you for highlighting that in this AT&amp;T Global Service Contract. So thank you, guys, for that. That's it.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other questions in Business Affairs? Just for also a point of clarity, it can be revisited at a different time, maybe an instructional policy, but about the Chromebook statement with Member Hall, as I understand in some schools where they receive Chromebooks, and if they qualify for title funds, Chromebooks are considered like a textbook?
They are.
Is qualified the same way? So, you don't know? What does that mean, Ms. Faul?
I was listening.
Okay, so let me posit it different. They are considered like textbooks. And so since I already know the answer, I probably should have posited with certainty. And so for those that qualify replacement funds, if the building, when the funds are designated to specific buildings, to your point, if they need like renewal or they have to replace, they can use some of those funds for that. And then maybe the other part, when the information Ms. Hall asks for is provided, if we start to give away textbooks, the cost, I'm sorry, not textbooks, the Chromebooks, the cost analysis for that versus recycle, or is there, if it's a time period? Because just like with books, when we renew, after so many years, we order a new set of curriculum, like if this device has been with the organization so long, do we just, lack of better word, 86 it out, and we're buying new equipment anyway? And how could that be equitable, consistent throughout? Like, to give those hard numbers, if this is even a reality, or this is not something we do, and it comes through title fund, we can use a lot of title funds, which a majority of our schools may qualify for, but all don't. So that's still a relevant question, if we have to replace them, because all schools don't get title one, even though it's a few. So I just wanted to put that there, so all that information could be available, because I have, so I can have the answers as well. Thank you, Member Hall. All right. Is there a motion to approve the business fair recommendations in Section 23?
So moved.
It's been moved by a member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice President Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, we will have our committee reports, starting with legal contracts and board policy.
Thank you, Madam President. The Legal Contracts and Policy Committee met on August 4th here in this room. We discussed appearing of bill of rights policy. We also made updates to that. We reviewed policy, another policy, which was purchasing and bidding policy as well. Our next meeting will be, I'm sorry, our next policy that we'll be reviewing is policies that procurement, federal government grants and policies, that's one we will have to get taken care of. We will also be looking at some other Neola policies and ILC policy as well. Our next meeting will be September the 15th at 5:30 in this room. We also have a policy this evening that we need to have for the third and final reading, and I will make a motion that we accept this policy. I make a motion for the policy, I'm sorry, to accept the policy. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm going too fast. My ADHD kicking in.
It's all right.
Hey, I'm sorry. We are asking for a third and final reading for purchasing and bidding policy, policy 6320. Thank you, Madam President.
No problem. Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Now, is there a motion for the third and final reading of board policy 6320, purchasing and bidding?
So moved.
It's been moved by a member Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by a member Autry. Any discussion? Thank you, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, we will have finance and capital management. Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members of the board, so the Finance Committee will meet on August 18th, which is next Monday at 4:30, and we will meet with our new interim treasurer, Mr. Bowers. And we're looking forward to those various presentations at the Finance Committee, so that we can dig into those items and hear more about what's happening in the Finance Committee. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Now, next we have, it says instructional policy and student achievement. I need just some clarification. I know instructional policy, did it just pair the student achievement? Because we talked about the committee, which we approved the resolution for being its own separate, the student success and achievement, unless I'm misunderstanding, I could be, am I misreading? Okay. Because I didn't see for the last meeting, I said we needed to make sure we had a date, so when we convene here as for when. And I'll come to you after. If it's instructional policy, then I'll defer to you, Member Hall. So instructional policy and student achievement, because it usually just says instructional policy. Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. So Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee met on Monday, August 4th, and we had a few presentations. One we already received as a full board from Tiffany Lundey, and so thank you for the presentation on the summer programming and expanded learning. Also, we received a presentation from Larry Johnson, and he shared with us the experience of 120 of our APS teachers who attended the Ron Clark Academy Experience. We had several partners that made that happen, thanks to them, Huntington Bank, LeBron James Family Foundation, GAR Foundation, United Way, Goodyear, and Burton D. Morgan. A corporate collaboration team did an initial visit to the Ron Clark Academy. in January and began the work to identify the 120 educators who were going to go back to Atlanta to the Ron Clark Academy Experience. There were over 400 teachers who were identified through the criteria using student performance, teacher evaluation, teacher attendance, and principal recommendation. Those 400-plus teachers were invited to attend the Ignite the Classroom event at House 330 in April, which I was able to attend. From that, 120 teachers were selected by lottery. And so seemed like to be a lot of excitement around the visit. Principal Haynes, who's formerly Schumacher's principal, who's going to be going to Buckto Middle, shared his perspective on the experience. Again, a lot of excitement. And I'm excited about that because when teachers are excited, students are excited to learn. And so actually, after that meeting, I ran into a teacher, Ed Smith. I think he's a business teacher at ECLC. He actually had pictures. And he was just so overwhelmed with what he experienced there and excited to bring it back. So I'm hoping, in addition to the presentation, that we could actually put some action behind it. One of the things that seems like low-hanging fruit is they just had pictures all over the entire facility. And he showed me the various pictures of students in action, students who had smiles on their face, who were engaged in education. He said there was not a white spot on any wall in the entire place. And so I know Mr. Johnson said it was like a Disneyland for educators. So that's something I definitely hope that we can capture some of that energy and excitement and bring back to us. So thank you for the presentation. I'm excited about moving forward. Hopefully, teachers are empowered to take some of these things that they can implement right away. Thank you. And our next meeting is Tuesday, September the 2nd at 4:30. And I did take notes based on some of what I heard my colleagues say this evening about instructional policy. So we'll be seeing some of those things there as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Member Autry. Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. I think as clarification, well, two things. Instructional Policy and Student Achievement, that was always the full committee name. But what you're thinking about is the student success that Dr. Molinar created the policy. So we are working on getting that committee established. We need to find out what administrator will be assigned to that. And I know Superintendent Ottley is working on that. So I'm assuming we'll probably start our committee in September. And I think the first order of business, which we've all talked about, would be about the honorary diplomas. How we can start on that now to where we're together come graduation next year. And then President Jackson, I think you would have to, either the three of us that were on the previous diversity, what was it, D E I committee? Or if we'll be reassigned. So we would need to know who will be sitting, the three will be sitting on that committee.
Okay, thank you, Member Hall. I think it would just, since that's a committee that's reconvening to replace the D E I, it will go currently until new leadership comes. The same people will go into that specific committee. And agenda does need to be made, I think, with some, you know, to draft up the agenda as far as the focus on that, which also includes some of the highlighting things because that's what that committee was about. So like a lot of the presentations, even that was here today, some of those things could be presented, should be presented in the Student Success Committee. And so, and just to clarify, we need to, that needs to be done and established on the books before we meet again as a board. Because last meeting, we said that we were going to do, and I don't know why it's belaboring, but that's something that needs to happen expeditiously. Assign whoever from administration needs to be assigned because it's business that can be, like a lot of this could have been cut down because it would have happened at committee and we would have just talked to the facts. And that was the goal of that Student Success Committee. I keep trying to make sure I don't say achievement. So that's why it's important, and I said it at the last board meeting, so that we could have dates that when that committee would meet. And so let's just make sure we have it before we convene again, Superintendent. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you for that appointment. However, I will have to decline that appointment to the Student Success Committee.
Okay, no problem, Member Sykes. Okay, thank you. All right. Next, there is no unfinished business. And is there any new business? There's no new business that I'm aware of? Okay. There is a need to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or officials. And 121.22G6 to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office. If disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by a member Autry. Any discussion? Standing in hearing on, Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
We stand at recess for executive session at 7:38.
The board stands reconvened from executive session at 10:50 PM. There is no action from executive session. The next meeting will be Monday, August 25th at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We stand adjourned at 10:51 p.m.